See, they hadn't done that.
Right.
But I'm just looking at our pattern of crime.
I understand.
And so, no, I think they're just doing with the, uh, the gas station because the ones that happen at the gas station can really be violent.
Mm-hmm.
You've probably seen several shootings in some of the other cities that they, you know, it just starts shooting like an old K Corral in some of those places. So, um, yeah, so right now, to answer your question, they're just with the gas station.
Yeah.
Speaking about the 21st, this Thursday, is it Tuesday? At Gateway subdivision?
He's coming out. Where's going?
It's, they're having a H.I.A. meeting and certain districts. Okay, but they've invited the director of transportation, Commissioner of the County, Commissioner Dobbs.
Okay.
Myself, and I talked to him about your schedule because it's about closing Malone Mill. I mean, closing the back end of their subdivision, although Malone Mill is county.
Yes.
But the front end is city.
It is.
So, they're just, um, I asked her if we did, if I don't care, if your schedule is available. But if not, then we can get closer.
I'm looking at it now.
I think it's at seven.
Okay.
But, um, I asked her specifically to invite the board first so that we won't have all the...
But yes, ma'am, I'll be there Thursday at seven.
All right, and I'll text you the address that's on my city phone off.
Thank you so much, and I've been there to the clubhouse with the chief.
Oh, is that where they normally meet?
Yes, and they normally meet at the clubhouse.
All right.
Thank you for the invitation.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for telling us.
They're there.
So I guess we're still...
Yeah.
You make the specific...
A lot of people.
Yeah, um, yeah. Yeah.
I told him.
That doesn't say.
No.
That's my question. But...
The bell is ringing, ding ding. Won't start coming council members. Aren't they? They're shot, and they keep, I have to keep adjusting them. But they are terrible. Okay, well, take our positions. That's good. I'll call to order the City of Douglasville City Council regular meeting for tonight, which is Monday, September the 18th, 2023. Our invocation will be done, so I'll call this meeting to order. Our invocation will be done by the Reverend Orlando Evans, Senior Pastor of the Bright Star United Methodist Church, and after that, we'll have our pledge allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem. Please stand for the invocation.
Greetings, Mayor Robinson, council members and guests. Tonight, we'll draw inspiration from Psalm 34 and four, which tells us, "I sought the Lord and he answered me." One of the bonuses of being a father is being blessed with children who are always seeking something. Sometimes, my daughter wants to go to the store for snacks. Oftentimes, my son needs a ride to soccer practice, and many times, one of them, if not both of them, will knock on my door in the middle of the night to communicate something that they need. And they do this with confidence, knowing that they can seek their Father, and I will lovingly respond. As believers in faith, we too must have this type of confidence when it comes to our Heavenly Father. As we walk in God's will and seek His face, we can trust that the Lord will respond to our petitions. Please join me in praying. Gracious God, thank you for not only hearing us when we call your name, but also for answering us. Thank you for meeting our needs. Thank you for dispersing peace and protection, wisdom and provision, new hope, new insight and new possibilities. As leaders of our city, please continue to guide us in your truth as we continue to seek your will. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Pledge allegiance. To the republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as well.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge, and Pastor Evans, we appreciate your invocation and your wonderful story, so blessing to be a parent and to be able to answer when your children call. I'd like to go over the protocol for the meeting, and then we'll get into the meeting that's stated on our agenda. I would like to welcome you to the City of Douglasville City Council Regular Voting Meeting. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the City of Douglasville. This is a city council meeting of agenda items where official action will be taken tonight on the items that were presented last Thursday at our legislative work session. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the Agenda Item Comments from Citizens and Delegates section for you to discuss your business. Just a few protocol issues, and then we'll get into the meat of the meeting. I ask that you would please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the chair. If you deviate from this requirement at a second, deviation will result in us turning your microphone off. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud, react to the speaker, speak from the audience, cheer, or carry on a conversation with others in the auditorium while you're at the podium. We are only required to accept public comments during required public hearings, and we are not required to accept public comments other than on the items before the council. If you have an electronic device, a cellphone, iPad, all of that, we ask that you please put those in silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting so they will not be disruptive. Now, this is how the agenda will be handled this evening. The committee chairperson will read their agenda item, then that person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. Myself and council members will possibly ask questions to help seek more information from the applicant, and then the chairperson will make a recommendation to approve or not to approve that particular item. After the committee chairperson does that for comments or statements from the audience, if that is the case during a public hearing, we'll ask for those that are in favor of the item, that you'll have 20 minutes to speak, and those who are in opposition of that approving that item, you'll have 20 minutes as well, and each person has five minutes to speak. But there are only 20 minutes per side in totality for or against any item. Each person only has one opportunity to come, and tonight's meeting will just receive new information if it's a public hearing and you brought that information to us to deliberate over and discuss last Thursday. Tonight is just for new information. Prior to approaching the podium, we ask that you fill out a speaker sign-in card. They're outside on the desk. Those are blue cards. Once you fill that application or that card out to speak, we ask that you please give that to our Assistant City Clerk, Ms. Candace Jackson, to my right. And in that information, it should have everything that you're going to tell us when you come to the podium, which is your name, your address for the record, and then you can go ahead and speak. This is not a question-and-answer format and not a debate. We're just here to hear the information and help us to make our decisions. Please address your comments and all of your concerns when you're at the microphone to the committee chairperson that you're speaking to unless otherwise directed. That's okay. Any printed information? That must be very important, Coach, the Lord calling you. Oh, that's the iPad, Mr. Jenkins, IT? I thought that was your grandbaby calling or something. Okay, any printed material? We ask that you would please give that printed material to our Assistant City Clerk, Ms. Candace. She will make copies and disseminate the information to us. That's a whole lot of talking for the meeting. I hope that we are all on the same page and that everyone understands the protocol and the rules for the meeting. It will go pretty smoothly, and you're welcome to come and talk to us. And if you have anything, if there's not listed on the agenda, again, at the end of the meeting, during comments from citizens and delegates, you're welcome to come up and talk to us, and you'll have five minutes to speak to us about anything, any information or any subject matter that has remained to the City of Douglasville. So now, we'll move on with the agenda as it is presented. There are copies outside on the desk if you'd like a hard copy, and/or you can follow us on the screen, and we have iPads and we have all the addendums, so we'll be able to follow you as well. So now, we're moving on through the agenda based on the committee assignments, and the numbers. We're down to item number five, which is approval of the agenda. I will open the floor for a motion to adopt the regular agenda, meeting agenda for September 18th, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you. Did you get it, Ms. Candace? Thank you so much. It's been properly moved by Councilmember Adams to adopt the regular meeting agenda for tonight, and second by Councilmember Estes. Do we have any questions, comments or concerns from council members? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The agenda is adopted for this evening. Now, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. So I open the floor for a motion to approve of the minutes of August 31st, 2023, which is the Millage Rate Public Hearing Number Three Special Meeting, the Millage Rate Adoption Legislative Work Session, and the minutes of September 5th, 2023. So I open the floor for a motion to approve this agenda item.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Estes. I have a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem. Is that who you had? Thank you so much. It's been properly moved, and second to approve the minutes as presented. Do we see any corrections or any concerns with the minutes as it relates to what's been presented from the, to the elected officials? I don't see anyone. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The minutes are approved for item 23-330. Now, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I will open the floor, open the floor for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Estes. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second, please? Thank you, Councilwoman Adams. It's been properly moved in second by Councilmember Estes, and seconded by Councilmember Adams to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do we see any corrections, concerns or comments? Any comments from the council? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda is unanimously approved. We'll move on now, let me get off my screen, to the Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight on the Economic Development Committee, and that is to consider and adopt a resolution approving the execution and delivery of a proposed tax incentives agreement with D.C. Blocks, Inc. for the acquisition and construction of a co-location data center in the City of Douglasville in up to three phases. And we have tonight the inestimable, Mr. Chris Pumphrey to provide additional information. I think we had some questions last week about the dollars and cents on that.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Chris Pumphrey, Elevate Douglas Economic Partnership, 8512 Bowden Street. Forgive me, I'm a little hoarse. There's a couple of sporting events this weekend, so they got me. Yeah, so what was missing was the tax incentives agreement in the exhibit from Thursday. That is all in your documents now. It also reflects the calculations for the various phases as it relates to the property tax savings plan. What you see there are three phases, all 10-year phases of the same, the same amount as it relates to the percentage that is being paid. As you recall, the total of investment is 1.2 billion. What we discussed when we first presented the resolution, that the additional investment over, from the personal property was 540 million. That's invested every three to five years. So when you look at the savings in the agreement, it is just reflective of the savings for D.C. Blocks. It is not reflective of the investment made by the clients. So if you calculate the investment made by the clients, in addition to the investment made by D.C. Blocks, it ultimately ends up being a 36% savings on property taxes over the life of the three phases.
Thank you, Mr. Pumphrey. Do we have any? I'll open the floor for any comments or questions at this time from the council, mayor or council.
I don't have any.
Ms. Adams, was that you? Did you raise your hand? Oh, no. Okay. I know we have like 50 pages there to digest in about 12 seconds, so it shouldn't be a problem. Now, I think we've had, we were introduced to this a while back, so we do know the background on this, just so people are clear. This is not the first time we're seeing this. So we just wanted to make sure that it was with the record and what we had in front of us in case there were any last-minute questions. But it sounds like, looks like we're good, okay? Seeing no questions or comments. I would like to place item number 23-373 in the form of a motion for approval.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Estes. It's been properly moved in second, moved by the Chair, City Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller, to approve item 23-373, and seconded by Councilmember Estes. Do we have any questions, comments or concerns for Mr. Pumphrey as it relates to this item? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-364 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, that's all we have under the Economic Development Committee tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. 360, 373, 23-373. Okay. So now, we'll move on to Finance Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight under Finance. Authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Garland DBS Incorporated for work to be completed, which includes the coating project, roof repairs, brick wall restoration, and new gutters and downspouts at the Alice Hawthorne Center at Jesse Davis Park. Mr. Roberts was with us on Thursday evening at our planning meeting. He shared with us the potential costs, how they came about, who to authorize or who to request to do the repairs, and basically to bring the Hawthorne building up to basically the same look as the new buildings that we're constructing at Jesse Davis Park. Are there any questions of council or Madam Mayor for Mr. Roberts or any other discussion on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, the only discussion I had is that we appreciate the park system being proactive in bringing this information to us and Mr. Roberts to help, help the interior and the outside of Alice Hawthorne. I think it's 20-plus years old, and so we do have some renovations that need to be done and some fixes, put some moisturizer on the lines, and it's going to look very nice, especially when we have that new $25 million plus Jesse Davis Park renovation done. So we appreciate staff for helping to keep us on speed with things. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Any others? No other question or comment? Can I make a motion? We approve item 23-364 for those improvements discussed.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilman Davis, did you get him first? Okay, thank you. It's been properly moved in second, moved by the Finance Chair, Councilmember Adams, and seconded by Councilmember Davis, whose ward this is in, to approve item 23-364. Do we have any additional comments, questions or concerns as it relates to this item from council? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving item 23-364, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-364 is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all we have under Finance tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on to the next committee, which is item number 10, Housing and Community Affairs Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under Housing and Community Affairs.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Mm-hmm. We'll move on to the next item, which is Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Authorize the mayor to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the Dutch County Board of Commissioners and Dutch County Sheriff Office for Nispel Inmate Jail Services. And we discussed that discussion the other night. If there any, if there any discussion, more discussion from the mayor and council? If not, I'd like to make my motion. Okay, I make a motion. We approve 23-362.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Thank you. Councilman Adams. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 23-362. Do we have any concerns, questions or comments? I know we did discuss this last week. Does council members, anyone have any additional concerns or want to say anything else? I'll open the floor. Thank you. I don't see any. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-362 is unanimously approved.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on to the next item, which is Personnel and Organization Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business in Personnel and Organization.
Thank you so much, Coach. We'll move on to item 13, Planning and Development Committee chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Planning and Development Committee tonight has several items, three to be exact. We will start with item A, as always. Consider a request to adopt a proposed ordinance to amend sections 2.02, 13.02, and 13.02 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the City of Douglasville to add the uses for taproom, tasting room, wine tasting room, brew pub, wine bar, micro distillery and micro brewery, to amend the definition for micro brewery, and to add definitions for micro distillery, taproom, tasting room, wine tasting room, brew pub, wine bar, brewery, distillery and winery. I hope that's enough. I know that Ms. Jordan had brought us up to date as to all of the information in this proposed ordinance amendment, and I hope that we have covered each and every one sufficiently, hopefully to minimize confusion. I don't know. We'll see, I guess, won't we, Ms. Jordan?
The only change that I made to the written document was color coding to match the 2.02 allowed uses table.
Okay.
So that should hopefully make it a little bit more clear for council, and then also for, once it's added to the table, it will be more clear for applicants as well.
Okay. Questions, comments, anyone? Okay, we're going to move forward then as is. Ms. Jordan has, has added some information into the information we provide, we were provided on Thursday, hopefully to make it more simple. I commend staff for the hard work on this, and I know that it will be handled properly. I will make a motion. We approve item 23-313 as shown.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Estes. That was a hearty second. So it's been properly moved in second, moved by the Chair, Councilmember Adams, and seconded by Councilmember Estes to approve item 23-313. We did have some more information that was provided based on questions and concerns that we have last week, but we had not raised any. Did anyone see anything additional that they wanted to talk about as it relates to this item? I don't see any responses. All those in favor of approving item 23-313, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-313 is unanimously approved.
We'll move on to item B.
Yes, sir.
Reconsider a request for development plan approval for a self-storage facility for 2.79 acres on Malone... for 2.79 acres on Malone Road in Land Lot 704, 705, District 1, Section 3, parcel ID number 07050130009, and 07050130013, for plans dated May 17, 2023, application by Steve Hokut with Civil Logistics LLC. Previous item number was 23-332. Mr. Thompson had brought this before us, but I believe Mr. Riley is going to help us tonight with any additional questions or comments. Is that correct?
Okay.
Good morning, good afternoon, mayor and council. I'm James Gordon, 6701 Church Street with the Engineering Department, and we have no additional information from the previous submittal of 23-332.
Mr. Gordon, my apologies. I just got your last name confused, and I'm sorry. I apologize. Questions or comments? I've, Mr. Gordon, any one? Okay. Moving forward then, item B, item 23-383, make a motion for approval.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Oh, I apologize.
If my memory is right, there was some conditions to the developer agree to this one. That is correct. Mr. Gordon, would you happen to have that information, and if we need it to be repeated, we'll hear it if not. I'm sure your motion included. I'm sorry, yes, sir. Let me rescind that motion and start over.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve item 23-383 with conditions attached in our original application for the development plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for a point of order, Attorney Dodson.
Thank you, Dodson.
And so Mr. Chairman has made a subsequent motion to approve item 23-313, I mean, 23-383, with the provision for the recommendations that were made on the first, the initial application, that that be included in the motion. Did I make it clear? I know I was kind of stumbling trying to find the addendums, but it doesn't matter. I'm sure it's on the, on the application. So it's been added to the record that we approve item 23-383 with the conditions that were added at the initial application. So we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Adams. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 23-383 with the conditions that were approved in the initial application. Do we have any additional comments, questions, or concerns as it relates to this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just so it's clear, we are voting on an issue a second time, because we have been advised by council that this does, that we do not have grounds to deny this particular application. So I just wanted to be, we're going to be questioning why we're voting on the same issue right after we had just rejected it, so I wanted it to be clear in the record.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. So this is a development plan that has met the standards and the requirements based on our Uniform Development Code, and there are six conditions here that are stated. So thank you so much for clarifying that for the record. Do we have any other comments from council? Thank you. I don't see any. All those in favor of approving item 23-383, if there aren't any more concerns or questions, all those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay, we have to raise hands, so I'll make certain that I have majority. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, raise your hand. Okay, thank you. Majority rules, so the item is approved. So item 23-383 is approved by majority.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll move on to our last item, item C. Reconsider a request for development plan approval for a self-storage facility on 7.01 acres on Plaza 92 Drive in Land Lots 53, District 1, Section 5, parcel ID 00530150032, 00530150086, and 00530150089. Plans dated May 23, 2023, application by Keylin with Haines, Gibson, and Associates, Incorporated. Previous item number was 23-338. Again.
Again, I'm James Gordon, 6701 Church Street, Engineering Department, and we bring forward the same item, again, 23-338, with five stipulations.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. The same stipulations that were made public in the original application 30 days or so ago?
Correct.
So nothing has changed there?
Nothing has changed from the original application.
Questions, comments, Madam Mayor or council?
I don't have any.
Okay, seeing none, can I make a motion that we approve item 23-384 with the conditions present in the original application?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Who did you get, Ms. Candace? Councilman Watts. It's been properly moved in second, moved by the Chair, Councilmember Adams, and second by Councilmember Watts, to approve item 23-384 with the five conditions that were submitted for approval in the development plan. Do we have any additional comments, questions, or concerns from council members? Same statement as before.
Same as before.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. All those in favor of approving this item with the conditions that were presented, the five conditions in the initial application, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay. Well, was the same as before, Ms. Jackson raised hands, five to two? Yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you. So majority rules, so 23-384 is adopted or passes by majority.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all that I have tonight.
Planning and Development. Thank you so much, Mr. Adams, and thank you, Mr. Gordon. We appreciate you. We'll move on then to Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll move on then to Public Relations Committee, chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
We have no business this evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. No business from PR. We'll move on then to Public Safety Committee, item number 16, and the committee chair is Councilmember Sam Davis.
Item A, authorize the mayor to sign the non-exclusive license agreement with Justice I for Court Management Systems Software Services. Madam Mayor, make a motion. We approve 23-323.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second, moved by the Chair, Councilmember Davis, and second by Councilmember Estes to approve item 23-323. Do we have any comments, concerns, or questions from council as relates to this item? Okay. No. All those in favor of approving this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-323 is unanimously approved.
Okay, item, item B, consider a request for the change in agent outlet manager and transfer of alcoholic beverage license for the retail package sale of wine, malt beverage at the following establishment, current licensee, One of Business LLC, DBA Global Food Mark, proposed licensee, Hawk Food and Gas, INC., Global Food Mark, location 12241, Veterans Memorial Highway, current agent outlet manager, Ibran Hayda, proposed agent outlet manager, Shana Sultana. The required fees haven't paid into the finance department, but applicant, please come down if you're here. Take your name for the records, please, ma'am.
Shana Sultana.
Yes.
Shana Sultana.
Name and address for the records.
12241, Veterans Memorial Highway.
Okay. Madam Mayor, make a motion. We approve 23-353.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 23-323. I know we did have questions from our police department and our deputy chief giving us the green light, and then we know that this is the first application in this community, but you all have experience running the same type of establishment. You have, you said you had 10 or more years' experience, so. Yes, sir. Thank you. We have any additional comments, concerns, or questions? Yes, or Councilman Adams?
Madam Mayor, I just had a question. Could someone tell me physically where this is located? I see the address. Can, can we get a landmark or a location of where it is, please?
Who can give us a community development?
I can look it up on Google, I assume. I just thought someone might know.
This, this is at the corner of Veterans Memorial and 92, on the, the west corner.
Veterans Memorial and 92.
Yes.
The old 92.
Where 92 runs into 78.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Adams. Any other concerns or comments or questions as it relates to this item from council? I don't see any. All those in favor of approving item 23-323, please, any other concerns, comments, questions? Consider it's 23-353. Okay? If not, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Unanimously approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Moving on to item C. Consider a request for change in agent outlet manager and the transfer of the alcoholic beverage license for the retail package sale of wine, malt beverage at the following establishment, current licensee, Douglasville Market LLC, proposed license 9318, Douglasville LLC, location 9318 Georgia 5. Current agent outlet manager, Rayem Barani, proposed agent outlet manager, Chastan Patel. Required fees haven't paid into the finance department. If the Patels are here, would you come down?
Good evening. I'm Chintan Patel, 9318 Douglasville, Georgia Highway 5, Douglasville.
Thank you, sir, for coming in. Madam Mayor, I'd like to approve number 23-354.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. It's been properly moved in second to approve item 23-354. Do we have any additional comments, questions, or concerns? I know we did raise the standard about how training was done to check for eligibility to serve alcohol, and you did talk about training that you have on site, and the police department did not have any violations against you, so that all cleared. Do we have any other concerns, any statements? Not hearing any. All those in favor of approving item 23-354, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 23-354 is unanimously approved.
Thank you.
Congratulations. You're welcome.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. We'll move on then to the next committee, which is Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you so much, Coach. We'll move on then to Technology Committee, chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Technology Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. We'll move on then to our last committee, which is Transportation Committee, chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under transportation tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Uh huh. So now we're down to other business. Is there any other business to come before council tonight from council members that we need to address? I don't see any. Then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. I would like to say we appreciate staff and the community for the concert series that we had. Our last concert was Saturday. We were really nervous. We were praying because it rained pretty heavily during the day, but by the evening, it was a nice, very beautiful evening, temperature-wise, no rain, and the concert was just stellar. So we thank you so much, City Manager and all the staff and the police department especially. Chief Sparks, we thank you for having security there so that everyone felt comfortable coming. We just had a fabulous time. Ms. Rhymes did an outstanding job. It was a great concert, and the whole entire series was great. All three artists were phenomenal. We've only heard very, very positive things, small critiques for things that we know we're going to work on, and we brought a lot of those to the table to correct ourselves at our first meeting from the concert, but just hearing great things about it. So thank you so much to staff and all of your hard work, and Ms. Chelsea and everyone. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. Any other comments from elected officials? Mayor Pro Tem? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I was just going to say one other thing. We often take our infrastructure for granted in this city because we have so many really nice amenities, and I had the absolute thrill of watching my son take his vows this week, weekend under the, our very own canopy in O'Neill Plaza.
That you built, that you, that you designed. That's a, that is a phenomenal thing. A son from the community, going to Douglas County High School, going through the school system, and graduating from Georgia State, and coming back home and getting married under the canopy that you designed from one of our Superior Court Judges is just, that's what family, it makes, community, that's community.
And Judge McLean did an amazing job. Fantastic, and even got a little emotional.
Oh, my gosh.
It's hard to see him get emotional, but.
Congratulations.
He's known Isaac since, since I was, yay high, so it was really nice.
That's right. That's one of Olivia's, Olivia's IB buddies, so we're very excited for him. Congratulations.
Personal point of privileges.
Yes, sir. You should, you're a proud parent. You should say that. Now we're going to look for some pop-pop little patterning of feet.
No, 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 something like that.
Not so fast, not so fast. Any other comments?
Plenty of time.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Councilman Davis?
Madam Mayor, I just have one thing I just need to, it's just been bothering me, and I just need to bring it out.
Yes, sir.
You know, tonight is the big show, and I want to make sure everyone know, make sure you focus in tonight on the, the New Orleans Saints.
Councilman, Councilman Davis.
I'm out.
Okay. Oh, Lord. I don't, well, that was other business. That was a personal plug. It's okay. We'll move on, then we'll move on. Any other, for real, not bothering concerns that we have from council members. It was for real? Okay. It's for real, it's for real.
I didn't even want to mention the Steelers tonight.
Oh, Lord. Okay, we're going.
Go ahead, Terry.
It's the invisible gavel coming down. We'll keep on moving. We'll go to the next item, which is updates from city staff. Our city attorney, do you have anything, Mr. Dodson?
No business.
Thank you so much. Anything from our staff attorney, Mr. Miranda Jordan?
No, ma'am, no business this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Our chief of police, you can come up here and arrest somebody, chief. They doing too much. Chief Sparks, you have anything?
Rise up.
Rise, oh, Lord. Okay, all right. Our city manager, it's too much, it's the season, it's football and homecoming season. Okay.
We will have yoga Wednesday at September 20, 5:30, 6:30. Come to the police department and get your yoga on.
Is it for beginners?
It's free.
It's free? Is it for beginners? Can you come out there if you're a little stiff?
Yes, come on, get on the back row with me.
Yes, sir. Thank you, chief. We appreciate you. Our city manager, Ms. Marsha Hampton?
Yeah, my two councilmembers would get me, chief, if I didn't say who that. You know that. But anyway, I just, they know better. I know. I just want to say on behalf of the staff, thank you, mayor. Thank you, everybody who gave the thank yous to us, the staff, and you saw us out there dancing and jumping up because we were like, we are almost done. So it was a good time. We appreciated being out there, something that I think most, if not any of your staff have ever been able to participate in, definitely from a construction standpoint to putting on a concert in the midst of everything that was done. I definitely policed, everybody had a hand in it, but I will definitely say, from the police department to Ms. Chelsea Jackson, Marcus Thompson, and Mr. Bass, who's running out there putting out chairs, everybody had a hand in it, but those individuals worked extremely hard with their staff. So I do want to send a special thank you to them. We really could not have done it without being all hands on deck. So it's been a good experience for all of us to participate in. It's been actually a good bonding experience for everybody on staff, since we've probably had about anywhere, depending upon the concert, anywhere from 50 to 100 employees out there at one time. So we do appreciate the opportunity. I would say that we do have that genre of music that the committee that we selected to help us work on. We're still working off of that genre and that list of artists, so if you all want to send your list of artists to Ms. Jackson, please do. We please do. We will be working right back at it again next spring. So, we are wrapping up some final things on construction with the town green. Shortly, we will be opening it up for the public. So, if anybody is asking you, we, again, are still under construction, but we will open it up as a park as soon as we're able to, and then we'll have our spring concert series. We'll have Wednesday wind down, and then we will be able to start leasing out the space to the public. So, again, thank you all. Thank you to the staff. We appreciate all the hard work that we've been, we've been able to do, and I think it's been great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, city manager Gregory Porter in Eldivo. Anyway, so for anyone who wants to rent, there will be recommendations or criteria that Samantha from Visitors Bureau, Tourism and Visitor Bureau can give to people so that they'll know what the requirements are as far as security is concerned, and safety, and fencing, and all of those things.
Yes, ma'am. That will be all listed on graystoneamp.com, but we won't start doing that until next summer because we really need to, we wanna marry that with the new budget year, and plus, give our staffs a slight bit of a break because we've all been, again, all hands on deck, and we will have the spring concert series that'll be coming up. So, next summer, it'll be open for the public.
Yes, ma'am. And so, but you did say that we're buttoning up some of those things, and Steve from CPS, I guess CPSRC, all the acronyms confused, but they're working on trying to open it by the late fall for, just to be a park.
Yeah, I think we have, I don't, I'm gonna estimate, we have anywhere between 30 to 90 days work of work remaining. So, we had our visit from our architect to do the walkthrough for substantial completion, but the timing of everything, we're still waiting on certain things to be delivered. We have temporary fixes that are out there that, you know, hopefully, the public didn't notice, but there are certain things like that that we're having to wait on, so it may be that it's late fall, early winter, but we are going to open it to the public as soon as it's safe to do so.
Yes, ma'am, just to be a park. All right, thank you so much, city manager. Any comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
And I also give a shout-out, of course, to the architect, but also the engineers and the contractors and everyone who put that, that amazing park together, because I mean, there's so many pictures published over the last couple of weekends, and every single shot of it looks great. I mean, it just, it's a first-class facility, and it's something that we're gonna be able to, I think, to enjoy in this city for generations, so.
Yes, and we heard, of course, when we had the opportunity to meet Ms. Rhymes, that her production person said they've been doing this for over 30 years, and that our facility was in their top tier, that they really enjoyed it. They said that the hospitality was great, and the service, and so we appreciate staff again for that, and again, for our new, like Christmas time, you get your new baby doll or train set, our new amphitheater that people are saying is really great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Any other comments from council? Alrighty, well, not hearing any other statements, we have, we're down to item number 22, which is comments from citizens and delegates. Yes, ma'am, if you sustain the meeting and you'd like to speak to us, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. She brought down this. And you can talk to us, you have five minutes. Talk to us about anything as it relates to the city.
My name is Cindy Welch. I live at 3002 Concord Way.
Yes, ma'am.
And as a citizen, I wanna thank all of you for that wonderful amphitheater. I mean, I heard about it, and you know, you think and see, I never dreamed it was gonna be like that.
It's beautiful.
I mean, it truly, truly was wonderful nights.
I wanna thank you for that. Oh, thank you, Ms. Cindy. You don't have anything in all those papers?
And I like your playground. I got to play on it.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you so much, Ms. Cindy. Any other comments from citizens and delegates? Thank you. Well, I don't see any. If we don't have any other business to come before us this evening, this meeting is adjourned.